Okay, it is 6:01 PM. We are calling this meeting to order. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Glad you're coming, I'll be right away here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as far off.
Now, a moment of silence as we think about those who promised to us. Thank you. Okay, roll call vote please.
Trustee Alter.
Here.
Trustee Decker.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Pine.
Here.
Trustee Warrid.
Here.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Also present is Attorney Gilchrist and Deputy Detective Danica.
If, uh, if the fans are too loud back there, feel free to turn them off. I feel like it's kinda cool, but I don't know how well the noise is back there. We're trying a new setup this time. We'll kinda see which one we like versus last, the last time. Um, before we do any other business, uh, I'm looking for a motion from the board to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter.
Motion.
Thank you Bobby. Thank you, I don't know who it was, Deb I think. Um, all in favor of moving to executive session?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carries, the board goes into executive session. Uh, we will, it's 6:03, we will be back shortly. Um, okay, I'm looking for a motion to end executive session.
I'll make it.
Second.
All right. Love Decker Megan, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed or abstentions? Carries, executive session ends at 6:28. Okay, uh, first few announcements. Leaf pickup will begin on October 25th and run through November 24th. We're doing it the same way we have in previous years, starting with fourth ward, then third, second, and first in that order. And please remember, no branches or brushes should be put in there. Um, and trustees, we just got this recently, a couple is looking to use the gazebo at Wood Park for a wedding on October 30th at 1:00 PM. Um, if you, we are good with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the usage of the park for that?
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you Bobby and Bob. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed or abstentions? All right, carries. Thank you. Uh, nope, that, there's an old, old slide, sorry about that, no presentation. Okay, um, I wanted to take a minute to update everyone on the five large projects that we have been working on for what seems like over a year because COVID delayed most of this. Uh, the first one is the well seving, cleaning, and maintenance, and this is easy. That was complete. Uh, you'll recall, we had to get, um, funds from the company to cover the PFOA related stuff. It was a regular maintenance that we have to do on our wells, um, that hadn't been done for quite some time. Um, we were moved to well three while well seven was being cleaned. I think we're switched back to well seven because we think that's sort of the best in terms of just the standard water quality mineral deposit wise for the village. So that is complete and that's a big deal. Um, the second, uh, big project is the Scott Street Waterline Replacement Project. Um, this is something that we started a couple meetings ago. Unfortunately, we have delayed this because the size and scope of the project has been increasing. Uh, once we realized that we couldn't just do it ourselves, we had to get an engineering firm and we got Robert Flores, Delaware Engineering, to come in, uh, and put together some plans for this. Uh, these are the impossible to read plans that are up on the wall, but this is, um, an engineering, uh, plan that has the engineer stamped. This is what was submitted to Rensselaer County. The Rensselaer County reviews it, comes back and says, uh, you're, the size of the pipe, piping you guys were intending to use on this half is too small. It has to be upgraded from a four inch to a six inch because of fire hydrants and so on and so forth. And all of a sudden, this simple project that we thought we could do ourselves, um, has gotten a lot larger in scope and a lot larger in cost. Also the fact that pipes are on backwater as the global supply chain is wreaking havoc everywhere. So, I, I did a couple of screenshots to zoom in. This is, um, the lower part of Scott Street and I don't know if, I can't, my mouse isn't working up there, but, um, the new pipe would start sort of at that crook of the corner and head all the way up the length of Scott Street, uh, to the last property. There's a couple spots where there would be fire hydrant requirements and there's a spot where we could change from the six inch to the four inch. The main difference is cost, but everything has to be done with the county's approval before we can proceed. Uh, the county still is looking at our final revision, so the county hasn't even signed off on this, but once they sign off on it, we're gonna have to step back and come up with, um, the decision on if we do this ourselves, if we do it this fiscal year, if we budget for our next fiscal year, or if we go forward on a grant, um, to cover the cost of this. Right now, we have water up there, it's working fine, but the lines are old and small and we're concerned. Trustees?
Is this outside the, uh, the village limits? Does this funding come out of the water fund?
Come out of the water fund, what do you mean?
To cover the costs for this, does it come out of the water fund because it's on, it's really a kind of a water district?
Oh, as in within our, our fiscal budget, would it come out of the water? I mean, initially, yes, it would almost definitely have to, but typically also we're running in the negative with water, that's always kind of been the case here. Um, even before PFOA, because there's a lot of stuff that we have to do. Um, I don't have the exact costs, but I know that we were thinking this would be like a $5,000 to $10,000 project and I think it's doubled or more. Um, and Neil's not here right now, he's traveling, so I can't get that specific. Some Jim and Josh, I don't know if they have exact, but, um, what we thought was gonna be an easy product is gonna be something that's delayed, so this will go for several meetings until we figure out more.
Yeah, I was just curious to see whether the village taxpayers are covering the costs for something inside the village.
Oh, I see your point. It's a village water system, but it's technically outside of the village line, yeah.
Right, because it used to be, and I don't know, it used to be the village, the districts outside the village paid for the repairs of any water lines by those individuals on that water line.
That would be a significant hike, because we're only talking about 10 to 12, I think, individual properties on this line. Let me go back and see the whole thing. So that would be a significant cost for each individual if that was the way we want.
You can't do that anyway, because if they pass a law that the village took over all those water businesses.
That's, that sounds right to me.
It is our responsibility, but I was wondering.
Yeah.
I always started too because of, uh, going to pay the town village, they worked out a agreement, they worked together, Main Street, they need to be paid, and, you know, then realize that there's not much sense in paying because the water line keeps breaking.
Yeah.
So it doesn't help keep breaking, you know, over, around our Main Street. Let's replace the line, like the mayor said, set it up, it's a simple trial difference.
Yeah.
It's just the wrong.
Like lots of infrastructure plans that just grows exponentially. So this is on hold right now as we figure out, get more information, get some more costs. I just wanna give you that heads up. Um, the third one is getting internet access to this area on Waterworks Road. This has been something that we've been working on since, I wanna say, February of this calendar year when we entered into the agreement with them. Um, uh, we started working on it in February, we entered into agreement in April. Um, Spectrum, uh, or their subcontractor, did come and run the necessary lines to the poles. So now each of the five individual locations has to be set up and we've already started to schedule those. Um, just as a review, um, there's five locations. The old DPW garage, the water plant, I have a misprint there. Um, this location here, the new garage, and then we have two poles, the one near the ball fields and one near the greenway as possible future uses. And the reason we did five locations was, was because for every location we committed installation, they contributed $5,000 off the cost of the installation for this. It was a $26,000 project, so the village only had to pay $1,600. The rest was covered by Spectrum with that deal. Um, so they're gonna be installing this, um, over the next couple of weeks. Uh, this week, they're gonna be doing some of the smaller ones, but I called Spectrum today and asked them to prioritize this building and the water plants. Um, because we're trying to get our old number here through a new provider, through a process called porting, it will take a little longer, so I would expect this building, even though it's the priority, to be the last one. The rest of them are just internet hookups. Um, so, and that's what I put right there, it will be a couple of weeks. And I have, um, ideally, everything is done and installed by the end of October, which means the November meeting, I can actually have internet here and we can all have it in live and stream as we need to. This is just an overhead Google map and you can see, uh, Waterworks Road. Um, these are the various locations. The, the new garage is that dirt pad near the top, this is an old map, uh, where we are now. Then there's the old garage, the water plant near the middle bottom of the screen, and then a pole by the, um, ball field and hopefully also a pole down at the end past the water plants. It's where we're hoping for a possible greenway thing. Once they're installed, we'll basically just turn off the service, so we're not paying for it, but it's there later if we need to. Uh, the next big one is the Woods Brook Drainage Project. This is a grant based one that we are doing with the town of Housick. Uh, there's two sites that are, we're working on. Site five is north of the Country Club near Richmond Avenue. This work includes realigning the stream and installing grade control structures. Uh, I'm sure a lot of you have already noticed that this work has begun. Uh, we have a change order, um, that we need to discuss tonight and that change order basically adds some work to it. And that extra work, uh, falls very, very specifically within the extra money that we have from the grant, so it's not an issue, we'll still have a large buffer of funds after approving the change order. Um, this work will go until it's done and it should be, uh, done before the end of this calendar year. The second location, which they called site one, just because they were looking at five sites in the beginning and then we decided on those two sites. Uh, this is a culvert crossing at Johnson Hill Road. This work includes removing and replacing an existing culvert, uh, reconstruction and repaving of a portion of road in the driveway and some other things. Uh, this work will be scheduled in the coming weeks, but right now, we're on hold again because we don't have the pipe yet, um, because the, the, the supply chain is a mess. Once the pipes come in, they will be able to decide if we have time to get it done this season and if the road can be properly paved. If not, they'll wait until early spring and they're thinking the latest this will be done is April. Um, the state grants, people are aware of this and they're fine with us extending the grant past the calendar year if that's what requires.
Money doesn't run out like.
Money doesn't run out, no issues, they've been upfront. They've actually also looked at the change order and they were good with the change order as well. I'm gonna mention that.
Mark, where exactly is that on Johnson Hill?
Oh, actually here, I can show you. Um, well, first off, this is site five and it is just impossible to see. Let me see if I can bring up, um... What's that?
That's site five.
That's the other one, Mark.
Let me.
That's Richmond.
Uh, here, this is the one you're, you're, you're looking for then.
Which is hard to see too.
Site one, yeah, these are impossible to see, let me open it up in a different way.
The churchy's old house.
The, the sheep barn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, right, right, right.
Where the belly is.
In the dip, in the dip there, okay.
The front of the prime, it's actually a base, you go over a little bit and we'll put you in the cover of the house.
Okay.
So I can hopefully zoom in on this a lot and you can start to see and read things. Um, but basically, this is Johnson Hill Road.
Nope, that's Richmond.
Uh, no, this is, do I throw one up?
Yep.
Oh, this is Richmond's, okay. So we're looking at the Woods Brook coming down the hill from this side and moving this way towards the village. And this is the golf course, I'm guessing, down here. Uh, and this is what they're doing with, um, the various temporary easements and redoing the stream and adding some additional, um, flood control measures there. I, I'm frustrated because Neil sent me a bunch of pictures and I didn't have time to get them into this presentation.
The bottom line for that part of it is, uh, if you leave the golf course on the rain side, you're sending the shoulder because it's basically a single lane, try and get that shoulder there so if you, if you're on the minus side, it's gonna be destroying the road and the trucks, it's a theory. So this way it's gonna help support the trucks and covering the area.
It's gonna widen it.
Well, a little bit, it's not, but actually taking down some trees or right on the road and then building up the shoulder to the, to the top.
And then this is the one on Johnson Hill Road. Uh, and again, let me see if I can zoom in here. So you can see, this is Johnson Hill Road. Uh, there's an existing structure here. This black area here and here are temporary easements. And this is, I think, the culvert they're gonna be, uh, fixing. Is that, is that the right location, Mark?
Yeah, so it's, it's at the bottom there.
Yeah, I know where it was going, yeah.
Yeah. Um, but this is the one they're on hold for because they don't have the culvert pipe, so that will depend on when the culvert pipe is available. Um, so anyway, but, but back to those, we're, we're in good shape. We have the one moving, it will finish at the end of the calendar year and, uh, the other one, as soon as it's scheduled, we're ready to go. So at this point, we're, we're just waiting for the work to be done. Uh, it's going.
They're working on it, they're working on it.
Yep.
They'll soon be there, a couple days last week, but.
They worked yesterday.
Yep.
All the rain we got.
All right, and the final, uh, update is the Woods Brook Buyout Program. This is the one where we were purchasing properties within, uh, the village. Um, this is the one, uh, where the grant expires at the end of the year and even though there's probably an offer and an okay from the state to extend it, we don't want to. We wanna make sure everything is finished. We had another meeting today on it, just to talk through all the fine details. We do have a scheduled closing, uh, a scheduled closing on our final property, which is 107 Main Street. We're still working with the county to obtain title on 115. We're gonna vote tonight on the two bids we received for the demo and hauling work. Um, and it will include all seven of these properties, which I'll show on the map in a minute. 27 Elm Street, 108 to 110 Church Street, which is one property, 3, 5, and 7 Hall Street, 107 Main Street, and 115 Main Street. Demolition, we're hoping that will, will happen in November, maybe December, but we'll have everything done by the end of the calendar year. And, uh, this is a map that we had made with the state earlier, uh, before they even gave us the grants, where we were talking about which properties we were targeting. Um, these are, this is Hall Street right here and we are, are going to be taking down 3, 5, and 7 Hall Street. Uh, 107 is the final closing and 115 is what we're gonna have from the county, so we will have this whole pocket right here, um, which is outstanding. Uh, this is the huge 114 Church Street and the building right next to it, which is not physically connected. We discovered it was great. This is the one that's coming down and at the very end of the culvert, 27 Elm Street, that's the, the last building. So those are the seven buildings that will be coming down. Again, this was a state awarded, uh, grant program after our flooding. All of the funds for this are state funds, so this is not costing the village taxpayer anything. Um, any questions on that?
Any word from the county, are they gonna put, uh, 114 back up for sale?
No.
Do you understand that word, that another leg or with, uh, the roof, that it might not be interesting this time?
Hmm. I'll ask.
There's, there's a sign on it.
That's, that's the.
That's the old sign.
Oh, it's the old one.
Yeah, I didn't come back.
The option they were joining.
Yeah, Craig?
When's the closing for 107?
Uh, couple weeks around?
I look at it a bit. Schedule for the 20th October.
Yep. And tonight, uh, ideally, we'll be approving one of the bids. We'll get that to the, the bid winner in the next day or two and they're full speed ahead. And, um, if you want, we can jump to that or we can wait until later, it doesn't matter to me, how you guys wanna handle it.
Let's do it now.
You guys wanna talk about it right now?
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna skip ahead to in the new business section. Uh, the fourth item down, um, this is the review of the bids we received and we received two. Trustees, I think in my email of documents, it's document eight and document nine. Uh, the two bids were from Dan's Hauling, which was the company that worked with us when we had to take down, uh, what were those two properties? There was the one on John Street.
15 Spring Street.
And Spring Street.
And then, and then they also worked with us on the American.
On the American House. And the second, um, quote came in from Housick Sand and Gravel. Um, the base bid price was quite different. What's the base bid on, on Dan's Hauling off Topperhead? 204? 204 for.
Yeah, 204.
For all seven properties, thank you. And the base for, uh, Housick's, uh, sand and gravel, I wanna say it was like 280?
280, 270.
Thank you. Um, so it's our recommendation, Mark and, and myself and Andy, that we award the bid to Dan's Hauling. Um, Mark, you wanna add anything?
Uh, just that, you know, we've worked, obviously, we've just mentioned, we've worked with them on two different projects now. They're very professional. Uh, I talked to Dan today about working with us, uh, you know, as far as, we know there's gonna be some change orders in the country already, so he's willing to work with us on a case by case basis and kinda help us with the project. And the price, the good price, you know, is, we're ready to play.
Yeah. And, and just to complete the process, um, when we're taking down buildings, you also have to check for asbestos, um, which is one of the invoices we're gonna be, uh, handling tonight from Ambient Energy, uh, later in like two, two points down. Um, some properties are, have a few tiles where we can just do simple remediation for a cost. Other properties have a great deal, you know, say asbestos shingles were all over the, uh, one building. Uh, then it would basically change the, the, the cost of taking down the building and handling the materials and approach is done differently, but we've run these processes and possibilities through the state. They're good with our plan of expecting, you know, for those properties, it's gonna cost more money. We talked through the budget today. Uh, we planned for the worst case scenario of possible costs and we still have a, a, a healthy chunk of funds, so it's not an issue to do that. So with that in mind, if everyone, uh, trustees is good, uh, I'm looking for a motion to award the bid for demo and hauling, um, to Dan's Hauling.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Craig?
I do have a question.
Uh, do we have a second first? Do we have a second? All right, thank you, now, uh, discussion.
Are we also approving the add alternate portion?
Question is, are we approving the add alternate portion? And at this point, uh, the change orders in a sense.
Well, they're listed as add alternate.
Yeah, I know.
Could I see that bid for a minute?
I think at this point, you're approving the base bids.
Oops. Right, the base bid is what you're looking at.
You're approving the base bid.
We know because we don't have all the information yet on.
Right.
All of the asbestos needs, that we're gonna have to issue change orders.
I didn't mean to confuse that, but right now, that's why I didn't want to confuse it. But we, we do know that they're gonna have to do that because, uh, some information that was probably gave back.
Craig, maybe I can address that. So, on all of these demolitions, okay, there's two components, there's the asbestos survey. Last month, we awarded the contract for those services to Ambient Environmental. They done the surveys on five out of seven properties thus far. On a demolition, the memory source we preg where, we should say, the add alternate, I think it was two options, demolating six number of buildings and also demolating all of the buildings.
That's, that's exactly what it is.
As I said, that you are acting on tonight, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, is demolition of all seven properties acquired by the village. The alternate is for a property.
Yeah, so the alternate would have had us originally planning to take down 3, 5, and 7 ourselves because they were smaller, low risk jobs, but we decided we have the funds to do the demo with the state funds, so we're gonna have someone do all of them. Thank you.
And as Mark said earlier, anticipate as the demos are occurring and they learn more about the properties, particularly on the asbestos remediation that needs to be done, there'll be proposed change orders. But as the mayor said, we've kinda reviewed all of that, looked at it, probably from a worst case scenario, there's available grant funds to anticipate that. But tonight is just a base demo cost for all seven properties.
And to fast forward to the end of this, once the properties are all down, part of the state's award, which Andy corrected me on and I checked today, uh, was an additional $182,000 to plan what to do with this area. Um, and that's part of the state funds as well, and that will be the next thing we pursue after this. Yes, you should.
Is there anything to run, Craig, before?
Um, I'm not sure.
Originally, we, there isn't, because we were originally thinking we had to take this building down on 22, but we don't. This building has the lot right here next to it, which is part of the property that we own, so they're fine to do that. So we will not think we need traffic control for anything except maybe phones from our DPW.
I'm trying to pick them right here.
Well, the, the yellow there, in the case, those houses are coming down.
Oh, uh, ignore the color coding, it's a weird thing the state did, I'm sorry. This is the property coming down right here. Not this building, not this building. Uh, this building over here, 27 Elm Street, is coming down. And there's a, there's the side right there.
Main's not coming down either, right?
These two are not coming down, 101 and 105 is not coming down. Uh, these two here are, and these three on Hall Street.
They're all coming down from the back, I'm sure.
Yeah.
On Hall Street, Hall Street is probably gonna get closed, just has safety features.
Right, I understand that.
You know, but all the properties coming down from the back, uh, except for the 110 Church Street. The way the mayor said, we've got that whole lot.
Yeah, sorry, this is an old map that the state used to actually assign us the award.
Um, Dan's good, I know, I, I've worked with him before and I know he came up and required it here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've worked with him there too.
We didn't mention it to you.
Yeah, but it's really good.
Yeah. So we have a motion.
Wait a second.
Uh, and a second to approve, uh, Dan's Hauling for the bids. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed or abstentions? All right, carries. Trustees, any more questions on this? Okay. The other, uh, thing we had within the same, um, set in the new business is review of invoice for asbestos investigation. Um, that's document 10. Andy, is that something I can put up on the?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, let me find that real fast. Do, do, where's my mouse, wrong screen. So this is the invoice trustees, this document 10 that I sent out today. Um, Mark, can you quickly summarize what this work has entailed thus far? And again, a reminder, all of these funds are coming out of the state grant program.
So this is the initial, uh, five properties, so if it does include, uh, 115 or 107 Main Street. And what I didn't know is that they flushed it and, and excuse me, the questioning process, I think it a little bit of a discount on it, but, so the five properties, the number of samples that they take is, uh, well, you can see right there, it's kind of enormous. 189, 164. So even though their original bid was really good, uh, they do it a little differently than some of the other companies in that they charge per test. Uh, but, you know, learning from that is, it's, it's actually not a bad way they do it. And then there's a, uh, like a secondary test, just to confirm sometimes, uh, in the original test, uh, they may show something or they may not show something. The secondary test is more, uh, extensive, but it's also more expensive. So they do that just in confirmation. So they're able to rule a lot out, but the cheaper tests, and then they have to do the secondary test. So the testing ended up being, uh, quite a bit, it was, it was quite a, a lot more testing. But I, you see, the other projects, we just took them, we, we condemned the buildings. So we didn't have to do all those tests, because we can have them. So, uh, Andy kept correcting me, I'm wrong, and I should fix that halfway out. So we weren't really anticipating this cost, it was, so it was like $16,000. We were anticipating the five or $6,000, but not, not quite as much as we.
Do we oppose the test results that?
Yes.
We, uh, yes, I just got the, uh, the last couple back today. I did ask them, on 115, it was determined early on, we thought the siding was probably asbestos. So when I met with Ambien to do, to do the walk through on that house, that house is condemned. And it probably should come down because of that, that wall was gone.
That's this building right here.
So I, I did ask them, just to take a sample, uh, when Dan was there, he said, he told me that he definitely thought that was asbestos in the siding. Uh, Ambien, I asked him to, uh, we decided not to do it, not to do the whole walk through and all the testing on the property, because if the siding was asbestos, it was gonna exceed what it was really worth to try and mediate it anyway, just gonna take it down as a, as they, the state prefers as controlled demolition. So, but I did ask them to take a sample aside, just to confirm, and they told me today. And I actually got the result, but they told me that it is hot, so it is asbestos siding. So you, the call on that is your call, just take that down, you just have to kind of decide on that. But, so it'll be, there's gonna be, uh, a few more expenses with Ambien as he goes through this, but this was the heavy hit, far on the front end, we didn't quite anticipate, I didn't anticipate. But I had to get, they have guidelines, they have to follow, state guidelines.
Well, we're a good, a good appreciation discount, that can be.
Yeah, I saw that, nice.
Well, you can take Mark for that, dealing with the company and stuff, as you're this, who was able to, to get that discount. And just to supplement what Mark said, these generally go in. And just to supplement what Mark said, these generally go in two directions. If the, the property is condemned, unsafe, it's structurally unsound, if there's a fire, it needs to be remedied demo, and you haven't done the full asbestos survey, department of labor can give you a waiver, but then it says, Mark called it to control demo, and all of the debris then has to be handled as if it's asbestos containing. That increases the disposal cost. If you do the actual asbestos survey and investigation, which were done on the other properties, you may determine that it was very limited or no asbestos, and it's more cost effective, it's better from a demolition standpoint, actually go in and take that out, place a floor tiles, and then demo the building, and then just handle it as regular construction debris, not as asbestos containing. So while this was a little bit more upfront than anticipated, could balance it out in terms of disposal cost.
And, and just working off of that, we were actually able to have three, five, and seven Hall Street. That's one where they're just going to do some simple abatement inside and not have to do the whole thing. So, I just figured out how to get myself to zoom in on this, so there we go.
Is there a reason we're reviewing this invoice in particular as we're meeting with the other, any other invoices? Are we required to review it because it's part of the Woods Brook or something? Yeah, I, I think on this one, as we're kind of winding down, I think it's better to go to review and award the contracts and approve the payments. I just think it's an obligation that we had to do that in the, with the state agreement or something. Under the state agreement, there's a lot of steps. Okay, they can't hurt it.
Here on the new business here. Just, I'm just getting to where we were in the new business.
And the state has been, on this one, responsive and authoritative on our questions as we've gone through and winding down.
Okay, so the invoice is for $16,511.20. We just need to have a motion to authorize payment. Thank you Craig.
Second.
Thank you Bobby. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, poses or abstentions? Alright Kerry's, any other questions really from anybody in regards to the Woods Brook buyout while I go back in my, way back here? Alright. Um, that was it for my project updates. A lot has been going on, a lot of work has been done. Thank you for all those involved in the office, Andy, Mark, Neil, DPW, Water Sewer, just been a huge team project. Okay, people to be heard section, if you'd like to speak up with a question or concern to the board, just be asked you to begin with your full name and street address. And as a reminder, we audio record our meetings and we place those audio recordings on YouTube so everybody has access to them. Would anyone like to ask questions, dress board speak with a question or concern? Okay. Alright. Alright, um, next thing, we have minutes to approve first, correct? I have it wrong on the screen?
Reports first.
Oh, reports first, okay. Trustees, we have our reports. Is there anything anyone wanted to stress or ask about in the treasures report? This is another one of those unforeseen things where all of the grants that are going on is a ridiculous amount of work behind the scenes on the money side of it. Even, even with a simple payment, there's lots of forms and various things they have to do and releases they have to get. Unless there's any questions trustees, I'll take a motion to approve the treasures report.
Motion.
Thank you Bobby, thank you Deb. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Poses or abstentions? Alright Kerry's, please report, Chief.
If you can bring your attention to a current period of calls in the month of September, total for years, 1,237. There's total of six arrests, for a total this year of 64 arrests. I'd like to bring your attention to, again, the service calls, the EMS are pretty much the same as they've always been, they're up there. But there's another one there, you can focus out the mental health calls, and the thing is, we're working on a grant for Unity House to create a crisis team in northern part of North Dakota. Training will be provided by Unity House in order to be selecting individuals in the community who are a part of how we respond to these type of calls. We'll start experiencing more of them and we're starting to get a little bit more involved. So we feel that's a need to start, you know, a big push about bringing a crisis team in to figure that there's nothing in the northern part of Kansas to create a team of Unity House. Speaking of Unity House, there is going to be, I spoke to you before about this program that they started about, is with the court system, where a computer system will be set up at Unity House. The grant open for that is going to be out October 22nd at 10:00 a.m. They're going to begin with some PR work prior to, by the as much as possible. I have been visiting different towns, Stevie Town, Peoria, Birmingham, and Granton, to try and set up meetings with their boards just to make them aware of this program up here so they can get it out to their senior citizens as well in Pittstown. It's going to be a really good positive program for them to utilize that. So, everybody's invited, if you can make it, that'd be great, it's going to be at the armory. Um, we also had, October 23rd is going to be national drug takeback, that's always been a big thing, it's going to be from 10/2 right at the police station. All drugs can be brought in and, and, you know, do what we take care of the, the last time, I think we borrowed eight boxes to colonize, so this is going to be a big turn of course.
Oh, we've got a prescription.
During the, the month of September, we had a number of individuals that were vandalized by Unity House, so it's quite familiar. Some evidence was collected that determined it might have been a slingshot. Information was exchanged between other agencies, it all went into the month, and it only happened two days later, they picked up originally three kids that were involved in this. I just spoke to them today, it's been ongoing process, they're up to five kids now. We're hoping tomorrow that they will settle, there was, there were videos and, and the statements that they took, and they start processing our arrest cases, we anticipate. They're all felony charges, we have twelve of them bases, so all those charged, there's going to be one adult in the participating court, which is, so we'll be, we'll finalize that arrest. Again, hopefully this is interesting.
Chief, felony, the felony makes is because it was over $250 in property destruction.
The damage to the property is over $250.
And it's, it'll be likely eleven counts here because we have eleven reported cases of it.
Eleven, if we multiply that by five, that's fifty-five different charges that are going to have to be typed up on each one of the individuals and whatever they're charged over, Benetton, as well as the state police have a call, as well as the handling outside of it.
Deb?
It's going to be pretty involved in most of the city head now, due to corporate media.
Well, I was just going to ask, I know that you can't share everything obviously, but as much as the good stuff that you can get out on Facebook page or whatever, you know, know, hey, we're talking to guys, whatever you can share, just so people know they, they know that.
We originally put it out, that what occurred, in that we would, we were making that arrest. And then I reached out to everyone that, that had gotten the damage and done it. They had to bring to us a receipt of the damage of the property. So, yes, we're trying to get out as much as we possibly, as soon as this arrest is made, we'll put it out in more detail.
You don't have to, you don't have to name the numbers, you don't do that.
No, I mean.
But just, just to know that you, that people know that.
No, I completely agree. And we have to be careful now because of the new guidelines that we have on arrests, that we're not supposed to disclose certain information, et cetera, et cetera. We will get out as much of that information as we possibly.
You got your guidelines from the state?
Pardon?
Your guidelines from the state to?
Yes, on how you can, what you can put out there on, on arrests.
Oh wow.
So you can't really disclose a certain agent, you can't disclose a name, it's very limited information.
Is this new based on law or executive orders or just?
It's all tied to this failure form. It's like suspended license, you, you, well, everyone who had a suspended license, those licenses are going to be re-sold. We can't, we can't keep them on a suspended license. So it's a whole new situation.
Is there a link to like all this information that you could share with us?
Um, you can go to DCJS, www.dcjjs.com, and there's a base that's Department of Justice.
Chief, if you can email that to me, I can blast it off to the board as well. Thanks.
And the other thing, real quick, is that, the, we're going to be putting together, in the past, we've had toys for cops, we're not going to do the toys for cops for Marines, we're doing a new thing where it's going to be all of the gifts are in state within the building and the town. Um, I think the name that we kicked around was Toys for Joy, depending on what different names, some different degree too. We're going to be starting November 1st, we're going to be advertising, we'll be collecting at the police station, but there's, UNHOD indicated that they were going to start collecting over there as well, and we're going to be talking about Sandbar, and I know Manikin's always been getting a lot of rings.
Oh yeah.
And I know Ray and I have talked about different dinners and stuff like that, so we have all that and that. And one other thing is that we're going to be doing a chicken blizzard that we've done in the past, we've talked about with the UNHOD, the sovereign president, they're going to get, again, we're looking for raising money for immediate organization of some sort. So if anybody has any thoughts or ideas on that, please tell us.
Okay.
Chief, can you just repeat what that was for February?
It's, we, we're calling it the Chicken Blizzard.
Okay.
And it's a chicken barbecue that we do all.
We did it four or five years ago and it was a lot of fun.
Okay.
We've done it two years.
Yeah, a couple of years.
Yeah, last year we couldn't do it.
Yeah, it's been two years.
And it's been a really good process.
Okay.
It's a lot of fun.
Agreed.
And, and we're, we're going to go all hook in ourselves, so it really reduces, you know, the cost that we have to pay out, the brooks or whatever, and so we're looking for, if anyone has a recipe recipe, I'll be afraid.
Bob, I just, looking at the report, I have one question about the calls out of the buildings for attempted suicide slash overdose.
Right. So. What happened there was, and again, this is, I meant to bring that up, these calls, these overdoses that are coming out, it's getting to be more and more, and we'll respond out there, because we're being requested by the county to respond out there because they don't have a car.
You're being asked by the sheriff's department to respond?
Being asked by, by the nine illnesses that comes out, they said their closest car person is aggressive, or the illness is going and they're not, they're not going to move on the scene until an officer gets there. Or we had one particular case here where we had a nurse that ate a car, so our guys back there, and, and the county is doing a tracking, tracking system for this, not for anything other than structural cause, just upon these type of training that we're going to be using. And Benetton Hospital is asking about it now for tracking purposes. I think they're using it for funding, for programs and stuff. See, most of our mental health cases, we have to respond to Samaritan Hospital, it's the closest hospital in the state.
Right, so, but were these, Bob, were they actually suicide, attempted suicides or, or actually just drug overdose?
No, there was, there was a couple attempted suicides.
Is there, is there any way when we list these that they're not lumped together?
I can list them whatever way you want.
And you do that because I'd like to, I mean, we don't want to see any of this, but it's just hard to determine if it was a suicide or an overdose.
Usually, what I do on those is I put them under EMS, and then I have, the mayor had asked me about keeping the, the reports itself, okay, someone wanted a review, and I can allow you to review them, obviously I'll block out names and stuff and addresses, but we can, we can break it out a little bit more than that. I mean, I just don't want to, it's hard sometimes to publish out something like that.
Yeah, suicide, that's probably a little more.
You got to do a tenth in, you got to do a.
Sure.
Any other questions? Alright, looking for motion to approve the police report.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Thank you Bobby and Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Poses or abstentions? Alright Kerry's, code enforcement report. Mark, I know you've actually given a lot of your report already with the other stuff. Anything else you want to add or highlight?
Well, if anybody has any questions on the court itself, I did mention earlier to the mayor that getting closer to looking at, maybe a couple of properties. In addition, and I don't know if you talked about it earlier, the mayor asked me to condemn some properties as part of this demolition, this is part, the classification, how they have to be paid, so I'll be working with Andy, because Andy really guides us through that stuff. But I will tell you that there's another Daniel building, the mayor asked me some time ago to, to look at again, because we looked at it a few years ago, we actually had an engineer's report on it. At that time, it was borderline, and that was at the same time we ended up tearing down the other building. Well, a few years gone by, at that time, the roof is gone, the roof, nothing touched on the building, we did have to have a picture of the building, so we did, lazy picks, it was covered in the bottom. Jason Poppy owner, nervous about the condition of the building, probably ready for himself, so I'm thinking it's going to be time to, I just, we're getting close, I recently sent out another notice form, he hasn't, he has to respond to me personally, but we probably should get an engineer in there to look at that again. The property on the corner of Elm and Church Street, which is the brick building, I've had concerns about for a while, it's not getting done, it's a crack. So if you were coming from, it's Kitty Horns and Armory, if you're coming from Stewart's, into the village north.
It's actually on this map.
If you look at that end of the building coming from Stewart's, so see the crack.
This one right here.
That's developed on the, was, it's the southeast corner of the building.
Yep, this edge right here.
That crack is getting wider, I think. The building itself is a brick building, so the wall goes up like this and curls in.
Yes.
It's, it's across from the Armory, it's right on 22.
It wasn't built like that. Alright? So there are some, there are some cross braces inside the building, but not at that end, right? There was one in the middle and one toward the, toward the country side. And, you know, I, I've seen so much that, you know, I don't think the building is not imminent, but I do think I need to get an engineer in there. So, the last couple of years, I've been trying, like the bank, the bank owned property, I tried to get them, and I told them, break from start, and nobody's doing anything to this building until a structural engineer goes in there and gives me the all clear. So then it was sold to a Russian guy, and I happened to catch him there one day, totally the same thing, I don't know if the bank disclosed this, but nobody's doing anything to this building until the engineer is there. Well, now he's told me that he's selling to somebody else, I know the mayor tried to get him, couldn't get him, so I think he's changing hands again. But it's still the same thing, I'm not going to, I can't allow anybody to do anything to this building until we know that law. My fear on that law is like, oh, I don't think it's going to improve, I think it's going to kick out on the 22. I don't know that, that's just speculation.
Just, they ask you, do they have to, do they sell it? Do they have to put that in this book sale that this?
I, I have told everybody they need to dispose of it, whether they are or not, I do not know. So when more, when I find a new one, maybe if I get something, I usually get the property first, I would let them know the same thing. The other, the other building is the 82 Elm, 82 Elm Street, the barn, that remember, we were ready to take it down, and then it was more counting auction, but part of the deal was whoever bought it had to take it down? Well, I, so I started getting after them, I'll take it down, the guy came, he got building permits to take it down, but not the owner, the owner hired somebody. And so I enquired about it last Friday, I got a email from somebody else saying that they think they're selling it, so they haven't come. Well, that wasn't the deal. The deal was whoever bought it at the auction, and it was clear at the auction, the county made it clear, that whoever bought it needed to take it down. So I don't know what we're going to need to do with that, that was just an exchange I had Friday, I was found out, you know, they had the building from that, that was found out.
Well, we've been through this process before, thankfully, so we know how to approach it again, and when the Woods Brook stuff is completed.
But I'm just sensitive to that, so as we get into this a little bit more, you know, I know, it's not possible, it's not, anytime we get into, you know, once we start down this road, it can lead to decaying of property, you know?
Yeah.
It's an expensive factor, but. It's an expensive factor, but.
Is there, is there not, are we gonna need to cripple the sale or if something contractual on the original sale wasn't completed?
You're talking about the barn?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I mean, it seems like.
For example, the county, I don't, I mean, I'll kind of what was in the transfer contract, right? But.
Problem is the people are doing cash, nobody knows. Goes to a bank, the bank's gonna, the mortgage, you're going for a hang.
No, I'm not, I'm not thinking the property, the county auction. So it was made clear at the auction that, that barn had to be down.
But is anything in writing or is it just like?
Yeah.
Was it in writing?
Was anything in writing or was it just?
At the auction, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Um, you know, and maybe in very least, we have, maybe we can build it in like what we did on Wall Street. And just at least get it on the ground, you know, because it's, it doesn't look like anything to the street. Walk around the back. Look at that.
All right.
Yeah, snow, we'll get some snow loads and run along.
One of the particular look at and visit is, uh, on the church and, uh, Terry Avenue.
You know what? I actually had to put a path for me to go in there. I knocked that. But that is another.
I, I looked up the tax, they go thirty-two thousand dollars in the place.
That's, in, in the case on that one is, yeah, there's somebody that bought it slightly unseen and previous to that auction, three or four years ago.
Yeah.
They got up here, they, they realized how much work's involved. They got nothing invested in it, really, they walked away from it. You know, and, and there it says for another whole rotation until the county decides to take that one.
Has, has that gone to foreclosure yet or is it still in that loop of waiting?
Still in there.
Oh.
Supposedly three years. Uh, I think right now the average is five.
Zombie properties.
I don't think if you live in that property and, and.
But that's not really, that's not a zombie property because that's.
Cause it's technically owned.
It's, it's personally owned, it's not.
Yeah.
Bank, not bank.
It will be soon, zombie. Any other questions for Mark? Looking.
One seven three, he's contracted, so we need to, uh, clean that up.
After your email, the other things, I figured out what you were talking about at the last meeting. And I did reach out to Jerry, I went and.
Um, U N H O A is having to pick it back in a couple of weeks and I think they have a huge crowd and it'd be nice to get that done in a couple of hours. Now, stop this weekend, this weekend after.
I'll call, those guys should have, should have stolen down. Well, I say that, lawns haven't stopped growing, yeah, but this time of year, they usually start to stop growing.
All right, looking for motion to approve the Code Enforcement Report?
Motion.
I can.
Thank you Bobby, thank you Deb. All in favor?
Aye.
All aye. Poses or abstentions? Kerry's Clerk, Deputy Clerk, or anything you wanna highlight?
No. Processing bills still?
Seven property changes.
Yes. Twenty fifteen utility bills being questioned.
Oh, yes.
People, be sure you get your PFOA settlement paperwork in.
Definitely. Still, still time for that.
It's important. Do it online. It is quick and easy and walks right, walks you right through. Just an FYI.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the Clerk, Deputy Clerk Report. Thank you Deb, thank you Megan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poses or abstentions? Kerry's Community Service Report. Uh, I spoke with Jerry, they did thirty-six man hours since the last board meeting. Uh, included the police station, town offices, police cars, setting up for an immaculate conception basket bingo, and also they cleaned up the park after the tractor show. So awesome stuff. Looking for motion to approve the Community Service Report?
Motion.
Thank you Bobby and Bobby. Bobby, 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 Bobby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poses or abstentions? Kerry's, and if you guys want me to bring any questions to Jerry, I could certainly do that, but I know it's just kind of just reporting on what's been going on. Um, Highway D P W report, um, Bobby, anything you wanna highlight?
There's nothing really, other than what you had mentioned about the lease pickup. Uh, and Neil, and I see you have on the agenda the, uh, old sewer van you wanted to make sure that was put up for bids.
Yep.
Other than that, um.
A website.
And, and he said that, uh, he's gonna start working in the north, north end of the Greenway as soon as he can get materials, uh, delivered.
That's great. Great, great.
And Dog Park, um, is coming very good.
Yeah, looks good.
Um.
Oh, that way, Dog Park Crossway that way. I always do that.
And I was down here today while they were working and they're, um, it's, it's leveled off. They have the fence all up. Uh, hopefully within a week or so, they'll have, uh, all the dirt packed in around the fence. And Neil's waiting, he's picking up the gate on Friday from Whitman's. And he's waiting for the track. We have to have a certain trash can as well, so that doesn't sit in order. Um, so, um, it's, it's making progress or just doing it in spilt time when they can.
Awesome.
Do we need, do we need special, um, adjournments for that?
I think we.
No, we already checked on that and we're covered under what we have.
So we're good. All right. Um, unless there's any questions, I'll take a motion to approve the Highway Department Report. Thank you Kevin, thank you Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poses or abstentions? Kerry's Sewer Report. Um, nothing hugely new to note. Just like Neo, they're getting prepped for cold weather. Brought in, um, the most in a month so far of gallons and, um, fourteen thousand six hundred seventy-five from dropping off and processing sludge. Unless you guys have a question, I'll take a motion to approve the Sewer Department Reports.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, uh, Bobby and Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poses or abstentions? Kerry's and Water Department Report. Uh, anything anyone wants to highlight? We did get enough people to respond for the tests. They got all of those tests done. So thank you for all the people who were involved. Those are just the standard tests they do, I think for lead and line or something like that. Uh, not related to PFOA. It's nice to talk about tests that aren't related to PFOA. Um.
No results?
I don't know if the results have come back yet. It takes a little bit of time.
It was September twenty-fourth, it says right, they were done. Finished collecting and delivering forty lead and, and sample, copper samples.
Lead and copper samples, so.
How to say this?
Don't think we have them yet.
They haven't come back yet.
Yep. All right, uh, any other questions? Looking for motion to approve the Water Department Report? Thank you Craig.
Second.
Thank you a thousand people, all in favor? Aye. Poses or abstentions? Kerry's. All right, uh, the minutes we have are for the September fourteenth regular meeting. Uh, is there anything that needs to be changed, altered, addressed, discussed? If not, I will take a motion to approve.
I found.
Yeah.
Marie sent them. Marie sent them.
Why?
Uh, I think it was a week and a half, two weeks ago, yeah.
You have, you have, you have one correction and I took care of it.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I'll make the motion we accepted before.
Was that with the Craig correction? Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Poses or abstentions? All right, Kerry's Trustee Reports. Why don't we start with Kevin and we'll work our way down? Anything Kevin?
Just thank you, the people attended the tractor show, look, the turnout for that.
Yep.
If people were around for that and St. Patrick's Day was, uh, if people wanted to do that. That was the turnout a little earlier. He has a few heat related issues, but four of the thought.
We can't win. It's either cold or hot.
Yep.
Otherwise, won't turn out pretty well.
Great.
The benches look great in the park, Kevin. The benches look awesome, not just in the park, but the benches look awesome.
They're coming, it's taken a while because of, uh, supply chain issues up there in the hills.
Yep.
But, uh.
Definitely cool.
Just ordered sixty seats and had, I had them in like the, the China supply, right up.
Yeah, they're having power problems over there in the country. It's crazy. All right, thank you Kevin. Craig? Mr. Depp?
Nothing new business as usual.
All right.
Nothing for me?
Obviously Mark's gonna do his job.
There we go. All right. Uh, old business, we have two items that I would like to, uh, table. Um, I have not yet, I had three things I had to do and I think I got two of them done from the last meeting, but this was not the one I did. So my apologies, we need to schedule this meeting, uh, to set, to discuss transfer station, uh, pricing, uh, for household garbage and recycling. So looking for a motion to table this.
Motion.
As, as normal. Thank you Bobby, thank you Megan for second. Uh, all in favor of tabling? Aye.
Aye.
Poses or abstentions? All right, please, please yell at me. Um, and the second one, we brought this up last meeting, it was the Rogers Avenue Water Tank Grant Application. Uh, they were requesting us to do seeker, but we decided we would be content to wait until, to see if we get awarded, uh, this. So I am content to table this again. Uh, and we have not heard on this grant program, the last non-COVID time they had this program. It was announced, I think, in either late November or early December, so we're still kind of waiting to see if we get this. Uh, would be a significant, uh, thing to get that. Uh, it would still be a, you know, twenty-five percent cover of the village, which is a, a lot of money. But it's a lot better than a hundred percent covering the, the cost of the replacement. Uh, so looking for motion to table, uh, this resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you Bobby, Craig. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poses or abstentions? All right, Kerry's. Okay, new business. Uh, so the first thing is we had a local law that we wanted to discuss. Trustees, I'd sent this out a little while ago, uh, regarding a draft local law on snow removal. Andy, I'm gonna put this up on the board? Up on the board? Geez, it sounds like a teacher. Unbelievable. So we have a draft of this local law that we're trying to decide if we are ready to introduce. This would be the third local law of the year of twenty twenty-one, establishing rules and regulations for the removal of snow on sidewalks in the Village of Isaac Falls. I'm gonna skip through. Um, trustees, I, I wanna put this out there as a discussion. You guys have reviewed this. A couple of questions and concerns came up. Um, the immediate question is, do you think this is ready to go and introduced officially tonight instead of public hearing for next meeting? Or do we want another month to iron out some more details, discuss some things and introduce it in November meeting? Which would mean that we would be putting it up, uh, likely as a public hearing in December.
Well, since Amy agrees to that, it doesn't seem like a good question.
I, I, I think we need to look at it more and to discuss it amongst ourselves, I think more, I think, that's my opinion. I'm not ready to, to make a, a decision on it, to put it out for public hearing yet.
Did you guys wanna bring up some of your questions or concerns? That's fine. It's no issue to do it here.
I, I had a couple of questions, um.
Sure.
So, right there in B, every owner and occupant jointly hand works separately. So if somebody doesn't comply, is it our job to decide whether it was the owner's job or the occupant's job? If somebody's renting a property and the owner says, no, my tenant is gonna keep the, the property.
To me, if we're gonna, I don't know, if we're gonna do this, that seems, I think that's a really good point.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what that means.
I think the owner should, I personally think the owner should be, you work it out with his tenant. The owner owns the building, so.
The owner might live in a different state, still possibly drive all the way here to shop for it.
No, you mean, it's up to him to make arrangements.
I think it's a practical question, who gets the money?
Right, so if it's in the contract of the, the landowner and the tenant, that the tenant would take care of the property and presence, that, that would be out of that, it would be us, of course. Like you have to take care of your, you know, the land property.
Yeah, it ends up in charging more for one.
Well, the penalty for failure to comply would go to, is this part of the question? Who does the penalty go to?
Yes.
That's a question. So I don't think if we don't know the answer to that, we shouldn't put it out there tonight.
That makes sense.
Right, we don't know whether we wanna do this or not.
Yep.
Question one. Question two, that was one. And the other was, you're not allowed to put it in the street. There you go.
D.
So if you don't have a yard, where do you put it?
Yeah.
It's in the, if it's out there.
If your only option is the street or the sidewalk, very.
Good question.
It always sounds great.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'll be setting up a meeting for you on this one.
Yes, it sounds like we'll be setting up a meeting for this.
The, the biggest question I have is under F, under Code Enforcement, uh, I mean, who is gonna, who's gonna enforce this? I mean, we're not gonna have Mark driving around, oh, that person doesn't have a sidewalk shovel yet today. I mean, Mark's busy enough doing, you know, stuff that we need to have him do, not going out to make sure that the.
If I can share a couple of points.
Please.
Not just from that, but just from the personal standpoint too, as a builder's tax guy. There's, there's a couple of things. When I look at this, it's like, all right, why are we doing this? Is there a, is there an overall, actually, you know, with all due respect, because I realize that they're, they're kind of the push behind this. But is there an overall issue village-wide that's causing a war to bring this law? I mean, are people getting poor? Is there an, is an over, an underlying, uh, sense that this is something that needs to be addressed? Because if there is, I'm not aware of it. The other part of it is a homeowner with a significant amount of sidewalk and wilder avenue, um, you know, I, I don't see, I don't see the issue. And, and what I do see is during a heavy snowstorm, the, the amount of snow that gets piled up on that sidewalk is incredible. And I don't think that anybody would want to buy a snowboard, try and, you know, to try and, you know, comply with this law. I don't think a snowboard would cut it by the time the snow cloud gets done pushing that snow onto the sidewalk. As a homeowner, I, all I can do to take care of my driveway, end of my driveway where the snow got piled in. And I can see from my neighbors on this too, and most people drive first, the same thing. You know, the front of my house and getting that cleared out, and I have a fire hydrant in my house. And, you know, in, in my yard, and I, and I always make sure that's getting shut. By then I'm done, I'm pretty tired, you know, I've got to, so, you know, now I gotta, on Wilder Avenue, I gotta do that whole sidewalk down Wilder Avenue. You know, but that's what this law is telling me. Plus I don't have properties, you know, I have to deal with a lot.
Right. So I'll, I'll speak to the, the first point, um, and you know, by pursuing this, it's obvious that we opened a huge can of worms. And we need to define all of the worms that are coming out of the can. Um, if there is an issue, if there is a legitimate issue, uh, which could be a safety issue, could be, um, um, ADA compliance issue, which could be a liability for the village, or just the fact that there's a lot of complaints from, you know, maybe there's a particular business or a particular residential thing along an important path, that isn't being cleared. Um, if we don't have a law behind it that specifies penalties, we can tick it all we want. It's gonna go to court and the court's gonna be like, there's no law, or the penalty makes no sense, and they're gonna be thrown out. So if there was an issue, we would have no teeth, um, to enforce a problem because we have no law or a poorly worded law behind it.
I understand it for the downtown area, okay? I, I, I'm more specifically, I live on.
Right.
More wilder than snow. I, you know, that's not an area that's, now, the other part of it with the passes, well, you know, my chance is go to pay for the snow equipment too. And right now, the snow equipment takes care of like the downtown area and, you know, or twenty-two, you know, the sidewalk law too. I get it, I know, no problem. But you know, if we, if we push this, then, you know, maybe you ought to have to start thinking about, uh, expanding that service. If that's something that we're all paying for, then we also get the advantage of having the upper end of the snow board do all the side.
Right, cause the way I look at it, along that line, Mark, is the fact that we have a machine, a snow machine here, right there, but you know, and it's not fair that it only is utilized on certain side sidewalks for residents as well. If you do Main Street, you do Church Street, those are residences that are out in front who are getting done by the village. But you're gonna make Joe Blow on the side street, who's got, you know, a hundred feet of road fronting or sidewalk fronting, he's gotta go out and shovel his own. I, I, I'm not in favor of this at all, so, to wrap it up in a nutshell, I, I think it's another law we don't need.
And, and just to clarify one point, that only works on certain sidewalks or other sidewalks?
Only which?
Where it's, it's, the sidewalks are too small, there's too many poles in the way where they can't do that, but your point is, is well taken.
Right, that's what I'm, I, I understand.
So it seems like none of us are content with putting this law out there and we need to either go back and revise it further, modify the scope to be less enormous entire village and more specific. Are there other questions and concerns, uh, board or residents? Let me do board first, then I'll move out to residents.
So as Mark said, the downtown area, what would you do about that, that fifty-nine Church Street, which Mark's, uh, working on with them, with their building issues? And the building across the street, they never follow the snow, so how do we tackle it?
Well, we could very specifically limit it, uh, in scope to specifically zoned areas or the defined business districts. That is, and then that's just an idea I'm throwing out now, we would have to.
I agree with that.
And we would have to review that, or maybe we, we break it down, one section within the business district, these are the requirements, if we go to like. If we go to like commercial, these are, you know, separate requirements, things like that, residential, that sort of thing.
Then how do you address that, like Mark, fifty-nine Church Street, Mark's had, uh, sent letters and no responses, and let's say they'll show what we're gonna do. Have it done by jury or somebody else, not the taxes.
Yeah, it'd be the same thing with lawns, we have someone else, that's, then that's a possibility. Lawns that are overgrown, that go too far, we have someone else do it and put it on the tack, but maybe that's something we could look into as well as a possible, uh, penalty. But there, again, it'd have to be defined very specifically by time, you have that there, Andy?
Yeah.
Where, I'm sorry.
Right here, straight there, saying it's village tax, it's loving on.
Okay, so we do have that built in, that's good. And we have a specific fine, um, outlined, not more than a hundred dollars, that'd be the discretion of the, uh, judge if it were going to go to court, right? Or it'd be.
Or that would be set.
Or it would be set by the enforcement officer.
No, there could be an appearance ticket, it would be in court.
Okay.
And the way these are designed is that the penalty is the hammer to try to make people comply. And if they don't comply, they're not only subject to a fine, this was the theory, uh, but also to the actual cost of removing the snow, and they gotta pay that as well.
Okay.
But again, the fine part of this, again, is designed as the hammer to try to achieve compliance.
All right, there are a couple, people want to speak up, you want to go first?
Yeah, getting back to, we was talking about the snowplows, they sit there and put a ton of snow, we're talking six, seven feet of snow.
Back on the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk.
From the road.
And I can't get it off. There's no way I can get it off. What they used to do a while ago, if we had a snow blower, a big one, truck, they used to blow into the trucks. And we did that, and that's how we cleared the streets and Fourth Grade. So that we didn't put all the snow from the street on the sidewalk, so people could actually clean the sidewalk. Because you can't get that snow off once you get four or five feet of snow.
Unless we pick it up, dump it in a dump truck and dump it, which we've done, but then we're limited by the equipment we have, the cost to the taxpayer and the man hours. Man hours.
That's what they do in the downtown district now.
Yeah. Okay.
The charge limit is man hours.
Yeah, all right, makes sense. Carol?
And what you're saying is that, uh, it's, the safety issue is a concern, you'd rather have people walking in streets than walking down the sidewalk for safety.
I don't think that.
But that's what's so easy for safety.
Well, no, I think that the safety issue is a concern, but the law has to be written right, um, to address the concern in a way that, that's sensible. Cuz if we construct a law that doesn't work, we can cite it as a safety issue all day long, but if we don't have the proper protocols in place to address it, it doesn't matter.
You've, you've gotta know something we need to make people clear their sidewalks. Just because you've got a hundred feet of sidewalk, isn't it, it's just not clean.
And there are a lot of people that walk, and yes, it's nice that parts of the village will be enough, but I'm telling you, I have seen senior citizens have to go and walk down on his.
That's right.
To the credit union or the bank, and have to walk in the road because the sidewalks aren't there.
So back to drawing board?
There are people that do like to walk in much time, but it's, like I said, I know it's where your little guy will, can reach in, but you know, it's sad that we have to worry about the safety. And, um, and that's our biggest thing is, we have seen people have to walk into the road, and then like I said, if there's also snow piled up, then make sure you're gonna walk it up.
All right, so it sounds like we're going back to the drawing board, taking these comments back. All right, so I'm looking for a, do we need to have a motion to table this? Or we just move on?
We've been able to table this for two years now.
Well, we produced our first draft, we discussed it, we're going back to the drawing board to make some modifications. With comments from the board, comments from citizens, it's good. All right, uh, we have an intermunicipal agreement, uh, with the Town of Huzick for Legal Services related to the enforcement of dog control state and local laws. Let me put this on the screen, it sounds very odd, but it's actually a pretty straightforward thing. That's the resolution.
It's, it's attached.
It's attached.
Oh, it is, okay. So, let me scroll down through the resolution to page three where it's attached. Basically, do you want me to summarize this, Andy? I, all right, see how we do. So there's two laws within the village that we handle, we have obviously, uh, New York State, uh, Ag Agriculture Markets Law, which has state requirements on how to handle, uh, dogs. We also additionally have a local law that was passed, Local Law Number Two of two thousand and one. Those are the laws that we have to, um, handle, uh, dog control issues. We have a dog control enforcement officer. What we are looking to do now is to basically tighten up all the paperwork, procedures, and have, um, someone, an attorney who specializes in this. And lo and behold, the Town of Huzick's attorney actually has a niche specialty in this particular area of law. Um, and it's actually, so, so much so that he's well-known and respected for this niche law in a very large area of the state. So what this agreement would set forth is between the town and the village, if there were a dog, uh, control issue that comes up, we would be able to use, um, through an intermunicipal agreement, the town attorney, we of course will be, you know, paying the billable hours as we would for any normal attorney use. Um, that, so that way we could lean on his knowledge and expertise in these situations as they come up, and they have been coming up. Um, and that's, uh, that's basically it, and it allows either party to, if, for some reason there is a need to cancel the agreement, uh, we can do that, which is pretty standard for agreements. Andy, anything else you want me to, uh, anything else you want us to address?
Scroll down a touch to number two, here.
Let me zoom in a bit.
Yep, so, first of all, this was drawn up on, after discussing this with the mayor, quite frankly, with the town attorney, it just makes sense to have someone who specializes in this, cuz this is a specialized area of the law. It can be handled administratively or civilly, but there can also be criminal components to it, when there has been a prior dangerous dog conviction, and it's the same dog, it potentially rises to a misdemeanor. To have an attorney that will handle, uh, dog control enforcement issues consistently, both within the town court, when they arise within the Town of Huzick, and in the village court when they arise within the village of Huzick Falls, makes a lot of sense. Particularly since, uh, the town is fortunate to have their town attorney specialize in, in the dog enforcement law. Secondly, number two, if you want to keep a handle on this, so what this is designed to say is that the animal control officer is required to report to the village mayor concerning the use of the attorney services for the town on a case-by-case basis to apprise the mayor as to the extent of the utilization of those legal services, like frankly, there's an economic component to this, you're paying for them. You want to be able to know how much of those services are being relied on. Periodically report the use of the services for the town attorney that's described in this, uh, intermunicipal agreement to the Board of Trustees as you may request from time to time. So that's, you know, built-in ability for you to keep a handle on this. This sets up the billing system where it could be a time entry on a, uh, case-by-case basis. That bill would then be sent, if this is set up to the town, since he is the town attorney, and the town forwards it to the village, you would renew that invoice as to scope of services and extent, and then authorize payment. This is set up for a one-year term that automatically renews for successive thirty-day periods unless you want to terminate it, which either party can either run the thirty-day termination notice. So it protects you and how you're not locked in long-term. Certainly in the short-term, the permanent term, the term you just mentioned, specialty, that could change in the future, allowing you to terminate a period.
All right. So the town will be voting on this tomorrow night? Uh, assuming they're good with it, we're good with it, any questions, trustees?
You know what the authority rate is?
My understanding is it's, it's in line with your standard power of the municipal rate from the village, but what you say is the then effective rate, that could change, uh, but you keep your handle on that, and that allow you in the future to. If you do not want to continue to do that way, you can terminate a period.
Any questions? All right, let me go back up to the resolution. Uh, it's the Resolution approving intermunicipal agreement for legal services for enforcement of dog control laws. I'm gonna pass through the whereas statements because we've already gone over all of this in detail. And the proposed intermunicipal agreement for such purpose has been prepared and reviewed by the Town of Huzick and Village of Huzick Falls. Copy is attached, we've been over it. I'm gonna skip, to now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls in regular session, duly convenienced follows, one, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls hereby approves the intermunicipal agreement by and between the Village of Huzick Falls and the Town of Huzick concerning legal services in connection with the enforcement of state and local dog control laws upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the attachment heretofore, and further hereby authorizes the mayor to execute such intermunicipal agreement on behalf of the Village of Huzick Falls. Looking for someone to offer the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And any further discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Decker, yes. Uh, trustee Waldron?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan, yes.
Yes.
All of fruit.
All right, thank you.
You should ask you two, so the village has an original and true of the town, that's a question.
Okay. All right, great, thank you.
I just so happen to have this.
Oh, look at that. I'm very glad, um, I know back when I started and we had Andy here early on, we, we did the same approach with code, getting, uh, Andy and his expertise to help, um, with any legal things that came up with code, and that has really helped solidify a lot of things, so I'm excited to have John involved. Hopefully the town passes it, go town, go. All right. All right, um, Woods Brook Drainage Project, this is the one happening outside of the town. Uh, we have a change order that I sent out earlier. I'm gonna put up on the wall, this is standard change order, uh, look. Uh, change order number one. Uh, these are the three items that are described, insulation approximately four foot wide, four hundred foot long gravel shoulder, long Richmond's, install in approximately thirty foot wide, eighty foot long gravel laydown area immediately across from Site Five. Install twenty-five additional trees and nine hundred additional live stake plantings. The original contract price was fifty-six, the increase is sixty-four thousand nine hundred fifteen, almost sixty-five thousand, which means the total contract, um, goes up to that price from five hundred fifty-six to six hundred twenty-one. Again, we have, um, a substantial amount of extra money in there that after adding this to it, uh, we still have what, sixty, fifty thousand dollars, eighty thousand in cushion, we have loads of money. Change order is, is, is in good shape, the state's okay with it, so we just need to, uh, have a official approval here. Do you have any questions on this? Mark, anything else you want to add? All right, in that case, I'm looking for a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute change order one. Thank you Craig. Thank you Deb. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose their abstentions? All right, pass, see if one of those is here, logged and signed in this meeting? Okay, we've already done the Woods Brook buyout program.
I didn't have a copy.
Oh, that's all right. Uh, so the last item, or last couple items is a motion, um, uh, we have an old sewer van, it has some issues, we know it has some issues. Uh, Neil has decided it's not worth putting the money in to fix it, so we want to advertise it for sale, um, as is, we just need a motion to do that.
As is, or we're not setting a minimum bid on it?
Uh, I don't know, would, would you want to do that?
No, I, I don't know, I'm asking.
I think Neil will have that information to us before we send the bid out, but.
Okay. I didn't know we'd put a minimum bid like five hundred dollars on something like that.
He usually will put a minimum.
If I could suggest, uh, on this one, number one, declare a surplus, and number two, reserve the right to reject any and all bids. That way if you don't like the price, you can reject all bids.
Okay.
So then I'm looking for a motion to declare the old sewer van surplus and to advertise it for sale, maintaining our rights to.
Reject.
Reject any and all.
Reject any and all bids.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose their abstentions? Thank you Andy. Uh, and finally, this is a sort of a clerical thing that is done each, what, year Bobby?
Uh, yeah, but hadn't been done in a couple cuz of COVID.
Oh, cuz of COVID. So we're looking for a motion to accept the annual review of justice court records. Audit?
And just so you know, uh, to reiterate on that, did, I did audit the books for both year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Okay.
And everything was found to be in order, there's nothing, no discrepancies whatsoever, all the numbers were recorded correctly, all the deposits are correct.
Good.
So there should be no issues whatsoever.
All right, looking for a motion to, uh, accept the annual review of justice court records. Anybody?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Craig. Thank you, Mr. Decker. Uh, further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Pose their abstentions? Carries? Um, before we look for a motion to enter executive session, um, is there any other business you guys want to bring forward? Okay, uh, in that case, I'm looking for a motion to enter executive discussion to discuss personnel matter with no business to be conducted at the conclusion of executive session.
Motion?
Motion.
You can't motion. Bobby in drag second, all in favor? I opposed.
You're not in a hurry, get out of here, aren't you, Ray?
Abstentions are to carries, we are going to end the regular meeting, enter executive session at seven fifty-three.